This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. I would like to call the Village Board for the Village of Ashwabnon to order for Tuesday, May 23, 2023. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Fluky, I see you're on remote. Can you hear me?
Unmute.
She's unmuted. Tracy, you're on mute, just so you know. And trustee service.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open and closed minutes from April 25, 2023. I have no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, does anybody have any comments from the public? Must be limited to items not on the agenda. You must state your name and address for the record. Limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action on this meeting. Does anybody have any comments on anything not on tonight's agenda? Any comments on things not on tonight's agenda? There are none. We'll go on. Anybody have any written communications or announcements? Does anybody have written communications or announcements?
No.
Nope, I don't either. We'll move on. Number eight, action on consent agenda. Action on the 2023-2024 retail alcohol license renewals. Action on the Class A beer/Class A liquor license request for Kohler Company, DBA Lodge Kohler. Action on Class A beer/Class A liquor license request for GB Hotel LLC, DBA Residence Inn by Marriott. Action on the temporary premise change for Boomerang Management, Inc., DBA Epic Event Center. Consideration of Resolution R. 5-1-23, approving Ashwabnon 2022 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Budgeted expenditures, April year-to-date general fund financial report, investment report, and department reports for May. Does anybody want any item pulled that they'd like to discuss, or I will entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda if there's no questions.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number nine, we are having a public hearing. I'm going to make this statement before. Unless I hear otherwise, I propose that we open the floor for one hour. Each person is able to speak for up to two minutes. Does anybody...
One hour?
Is the board okay with that?
One hour is pretty long.
I didn't know how many people would be here that would want to speak, and I want to make sure that anybody out here who would like to speak for or against, that's the only reason why I proposed one hour.
That'd be 120...
No, it's 30 people.
Thirty people at a speech.
Right.
Up to one hour. If it's short, you can certainly cut it short, but allows everyone to speak two minutes, up to one hour.
Not to exceed it.
Not to exceed it, no.
Correct.
That's on three.
Yep.
Okay, everybody's okay. Tracy, are you okay with that? I don't know if you can hear us on there. She's still muted. Okay. So I need a motion to open the floor for the public hearing.
Move to open the floor for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the floor is open. Is there anybody out here who would like to speak for or against this item? Oh, okay. One other thing that I wanted to say, we have the floor open right now for any comments for or against this item. We will not be reopening the floor once we hit the agenda item, on the action item. So if anybody has anything that they would like to say, please feel free to come up and say it. State your name and address for the record, and we'll go from there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Randy Murdock, and I'm here on behalf of the Green Bay Moose Lodge. The lodge owns the property at 845 Borvan Avenue, which is a short-term rental. We'd like to go on record in opposition to the proposed amendment to the ordinance regarding regulating short-term rentals in the village. I've been asked by a large number of our members, why is the village doing this? I don't have a good answer except to tell them what I have heard and been told from the last two committee meetings. These reasons are: We're losing our neighborhoods; there are fewer affordable single-family homes now; or there are fewer students in the school system. The people to whom I've expressed these reasons all had the same response. To put it kindly, well, that's a bunch of bunk. Based on my observation, what I've heard, the overwhelming opinions in the committee meetings were against the proposal, and the board appears to be in a position that they want to restrict the number of short-term rentals in the village. It's my understanding that there are currently about 60 short-term rentals in Ashwabnon. According to the last census figures I found, there are about 7,500 residences in the village. Doing the math, that means that there's less than 1% of the houses are short-term rentals. If the village wants to limit the number of short-term rentals, simply limit the number of licenses available instead of putting a burden on the owners of these properties. Although not all the owners of these short-term rentals are residents of the village, they're all property owners and pay property taxes and room tax, and probably require less services. Also, the properties that have been made into short-term rentals are, in my opinion, by and large, in better shape than they were before. They're also well-maintained. The existing ordinance restricts short-term rentals to a maximum 180 nights rental in the annual license year. Imposing a mandatory six-night rental minimum will limit the number of weeks that the rental is available to 30. If people don't like to see these properties vacant for a lot of the year, this will certainly ensure that they are vacant. It will also complicate when a unit can be rented. For example, and I don't know if this is valid, let's say someone wants to rent on a Saturday and Sunday night. Their rental period runs through Thursday. Another party may want to rent Wednesday and Thursday, now encroaching on the original party's rental time, which means their rental runs through the following Monday. A third party wants to rent Friday and Saturday. That means three six-day rentals in a nine-day period, a total of 18 nights charged against the 180 minimum, or maximum. I would like to reiterate our opposition to the amendment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Randy. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this?
Hello, my name is Paul Steinbrecher, 1281 Canterbury Road in Ashwabnon. Two minutes doesn't really give me a chance to go over anything I'd like to do right now, but I'll try to condense it. After the last two meetings and with conversations I've had with several board members in the last month, to me, it's a foregone conclusion what you're going to do tonight. You're going to vote to approve this ordinance. I don't think there's anything we can say up here that's really going to change your minds. I think your minds are already made up, and I don't think you're going to budge from it. The only thing I think that we can change, or that we can do, is to look at the 61 properties, or 61 businesses that are currently operating, and do the correct thing and grandfather them in fully, not just for six months or the one year. These businesses are operating properly. They follow all the rules. They've, you know, people have invested. We've invested into our property tremendously. Many of the people here, they've done the same. I think that it's an obligation to this board to make sure that they, that these businesses aren't just closed down, because I'll be honest with you, I don't know how well you understand how the process works on these, but with those two items, the six-day, or six-night minimum, and the 180-day consecutive, you will close down almost all of these businesses. There's a few niche ones that are going to make it, but the majority of us will be out of business. There's just no way to make that work. It's just not fathomable. I know there's getting a lot of attention right now. There's a big article in the Press Gazette on Sunday talking about this, and I think the last statement in that article, I believe came from somebody on this board, it states that we need, what we need to do is find a solution that works for all of us. I couldn't agree more. That's what we need, is find a solution that works for everybody. And grandfathering in all this time, money that's been invested into these businesses, grandfather them in properly. When you say you're going to do it originally for one year, that's really only six months, because we can only run it for 180 days. So, I mean, who issues a license for, a one-year license for six months? That just doesn't make sense. I think we owe it to us to enact that grandfather. Let's make it happen. Let's make the right decision at this. Let's keep these businesses going. We've got a lot invested into our community. I hope you make the right decision on that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this item?
Good evening. My name is Mark Dainan, 825 Spring Hills Court in Deep Pier. I am speaking to you as, I'm on my third term as a town supervisor for the town of Ledgview, so I do appreciate your position. I sit where you sit twice a month, and I do hope, and I echo that previous gentleman's comments, that this decision isn't already made, and this is just an exercise with no opportunity for consideration. I also am speaking to you as a property manager, as a partner in Powerhouse Properties. Our company is dedicated to managing just short-term rentals in Green Bay, Ashwabnon, and the Fox Valley. That's all we do, and we do it very well. I wrote a letter that I do hope each of you have, has read, knowing that we'd only have a couple minutes to speak, but I'd like to just clarify a couple of the points that I really would ask you to consider. Number one is what really is the problem that you're trying to solve? In my research, in my conversations, I truly don't believe there is a proliferation or a excessive amount of short-term rentals in the village of Ashwabnon. As a previous gentleman said, there are 64 licensed properties in a community with over 7,500 homes. Less than 1% is by no means proliferation. We are not losing our neighborhoods. That's just not reality. Overwhelmingly, as a board, you have heard from the vast majority that have, are in opposition to this decision, you know, I do ask you to really consider your role as a board member. Very few have expressed any sort of support for this decision, where the vast majority are asking you to consider not making any changes to a situation that's currently working. In the planning committee meeting, the discussion, one of the topics was affordable housing. We're losing our houses. We're losing our neighborhoods. We need more houses. I do question the reality of this particular situation. If these homes that are short-term rentals go back on the market, will they, will they really make a meaningful difference in short, in providing affordable homes in the village of Ashwabnon?
Okay.
Two minutes?
Unfortunately, your two minutes is up, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this ordinance?
My name's John Calowards, 2100 Casner. I come from a unique perspective. I actually own a house. I stay there a lot, in Ashwabnon, and I have a rental right down the street, three houses down. Some of the comments I heard about, you know, there's a lot of problems with them, the noises and stuff. I sent the letter, and I don't know if everybody got it. I did receive that. Somebody did acknowledge it. I have more problems at my house than I do at my, the rental. I've had the cops come next door, or a couple doors down, raided the house. You guys ended up, got rid of the problem. The guy was dealing drugs, and this is right on Casner. This is five houses from the stadium. The guy across the street OD'd on cocaine, dog bit people. He got sued, parrot out there every night complaining, chirping away at night, noise complaints. And I can't believe you guys are saying that we're actually worried about the short-term rentals. All my neighbors around my short-term rental, I only have one, love the place. The place is immaculate. I own a lawn care landscaping company, and some of, some of you guys I do work for, actually, whether you know it or not. It, so I don't know where that's coming from. And then to sit here and say, well, we're ruining our neighborhoods. You guys let the Packers buy up all those houses around the stadium, by Skyline Park, that whole neighborhood. You guys let them, or they bought them up, you let them rip down the houses, and now they get to do what they want. And then the little guy who's actually trying to make a dollar, you guys say, well, we can't do it anymore. Can't do it anymore. And then all the houses on Brookwood did the same thing. They ripped them down. They're putting up townhouses. You really think those people there have kids, are going to the schools? And that's one of the arguments I heard, too, about let's keep up, you know, we're losing the school, you know, students and stuff in school. That's not, I mean, if that's the case, why, all those duplexes had kids in it.
I'm sorry, John, but your time is up. So, thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this ordinance?
I would like to speak if I had the opportunity, please.
Okay. I'll let him go first, since he is online, and, okay?
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. I want to first thank you all, the village board of trustees, for the opportunity to speak today. I do appreciate the opportunity. I hope, as others have said, that this is still open for consideration, that a decision has not been made already. I would say, going off of the last gentleman's remarks as well, the fact that there is now less stock in the village of Ashwabnon, short-term rentals make up a very, very small amount of that. And in fact, a lot of this was created due to a village of Ashwabnon tax incremental financing in 2017 to allow the Packers, essentially give them tax breaks through 2029, and to allow them to basically build those, a neighborhood, in order to put in their title town district. And what I would say is that we are now looking at turning the gun on local investors. You know, we're not Hilton. We're not Marriott. We might operate one or two of these properties. We take tremendous amount of effort and energy that's gone into this, but we take a lot of pride in those properties as well. Our particular property, I'm speaking here on tonight, 1014 Morris Avenue, was vacant for years. There was nobody living there. The grass grew up to your knees. Village workers were constantly over there, cutting the lawn. We've, we've completely facelifted the property. It's now, you know, a remarkable part of that neighborhood, and a lot of our, our neighbors have done the same thing. I would argue that the community overall is in a much better place because of this. We've significantly increased the tax base to the village of Ashwabnon, and we partner through remitted occupancy taxes as well. This has seemed like a good partnership, and one that the village of Ashwabnon has undoubtedly benefited from. I would ask why now, with the nuisances and things. We've not received any personal complaints from our neighbors. We know our neighbors. We're very close to them, and we've received scores of thank-yous for what we've done in the neighborhood. We just ask that we're, we're allowed to operate as, you know, we were promised when we bought this property and when we were licensed. It doesn't seem fair to, to, you know, brush this whole thing with a broad stroke, when there might be a few bad actors. You know, don't punish those that are in compliance. You know, it's, rather, it's not a policy issue. It's an enforcement issue. We don't need more ordinances and laws on the books. We need better enforcement if there are troublesome properties. I'll yield back my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. Okay. Ma'am, if you'd like to come up here?
Carrie O'Sullivan, 965 Mansell Lane. No one seems to be talking about just regular people who have houses in this community. Everyone has been a business. So I'd like to say something about my experience with this. I find that we had someone who was renting their house. There are people in this town that are renting their homes that are not licensed. They are, they will have a huge crowd of people who rent the house, so six days won't make any difference. Even in my brother's town of, in California, where they had a lot of trouble with these rentals, they went to 30 days. So six days is much less than many other places across the country are going with these. My experience is a lot of, there's a lot of drinking, but my, and there's a lot of damage to these homes. People won't clean these homes because of the, because it's disgusting, that make their living cleaning. But the biggest concern I have is with fire. We've had periods where we're not supposed to have fires. They have fire pits. They have grills. They have, they start fires, and they've been drinking. They use lighter fluid. They almost, you know, start trees on fire on the property, and they don't seem to care because it's not their property. They're just there for the weekend, and if they put 20 people in, they don't care, and it doesn't cost them hardly anything to rent them because of the volume of people that they bring into the building. So I just think that a lot of the rules are not real clear, and I also think that a lot of the behavior is not necessarily reported because people are afraid. They're trying to just kind of get through the weekend and hope for the best. I think that the longer time would allow more responsible people to rent. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this ordinance?
Good evening. My name is Jim Kane. My wife and I live at 951 La Croix, so we are residents of Ashwabnon, and we also own a separate property that's a short-term rental here in Ashwabnon. I'd like to just start by responding to the last comment made regarding drinking and concerns with regards to noise. We know where we live, right? We're near Lambeau Field. It's NFL Stadium, and that is a major event venue that we encourage people to come to this city, Ashwabnon and Green Bay, because of what goes on at Lambeau Field. We all know that. But with that also comes the opportunity to socialize, and those concerns, whether it be barbecue grills, whether it be drinking, whether it be the concerns, those aren't limited to short-term rentals. Those go on every day, and there's already ordinances for those things in place. But when we allow cars to be parked on lawns, and grills to be on the streets and in lawns, we kind of turn our head the other way during game day, and, and now indicate, well, that's a problem with short-term rentals, which just isn't the case. So based on the two-minute limit, I'm going to just make some quick recommendations. I'm still unclear on the issues. That's been stated here today. They're right. It's less than 1% of the households. The issues I've heard, as I've mentioned, aren't limited to short-term rentals. I believe the board stopped short of a holistic and fair solution. More homework should be done. I've spoken to Representative Stefan, who has great experience in creating entertainment districts, and so he would absolutely participate with us as long as you have a short-term rental owner on the committee, which you did not. And he also indicated that he would expect that the Realtors Association participate, because he has experience. And if you looked at it holistically, you would find solutions, because right now you're proposing something that's not going to solve a problem, and most of the issues you're talking about are not tied to short-term rentals. Embrace what we have here. NFL teams blocks away. Look at Wrigley. Look at Fenway Park. The value that your properties have, all of you that live in Ashwabnon, are there because of the real estate market and its growth over the last 10 years. 1% will not drive the price market that's going on with short-term rentals in the other areas, so.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep, you're welcome, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against this item? Anybody else who would like to speak for or against this item? One more time. Anybody else who would like to speak for or against this item? Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing, then.
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
Motion and a second to close a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, we're going to go to action items. Action on Resolution Number R. 5-2-23, disallowance of claim Thomas Crabbe.
Mary, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Okay.
Item.
Okay. Chris?
So, Mr. Thomas Crabbe seeks reimbursement by the village for plumbing costs due to a broken water service lateral, plus subsequent property damage from water leading from the lateral. The location of the broken water service pipe existed on the claimant's property. The village insurance carrier, Statewide Service Incorporated, reviewed the matter and recommended disallowance of the claim.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, I need a motion. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to disallow the claim from Thomas Crabbe.
Second.
Motion and a second to disallow the claim from Thomas Crabbe, action on Resolution R. 5-2-23. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10B, action regarding ordinance number 05-1-23, repealing and recreating Article 13, Licensing at Short-Term Rentals, Chapter 6 Business. Joel?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I will go through briefly the short presentation. We went through Public Works and Protection Committee meeting earlier in this month. The proposed ordinance that was in your packet is the ordinance that was recommended out of committee, so this presentation is largely intact from the discussion that occurred almost a month ago in relation to short-term rental regulations. Real quickly, I just want to talk on, I think there were some questions during the public hearing about what the village can and cannot do as it relates to the regulation of short-term rentals. So real briefly, Wisconsin state statutes places significant limitations on municipalities like villages, towns, and cities in its regulations for short-term rentals. There's five primary limitations that statutes provide. The first one is that we, it prohibits rentals for less than seven consecutive days. So a municipality may prohibit rentals less than seven consecutive days. However, it may not prohibit rentals between seven and 29 days. I think there was a comment during public hearing about maybe some laws in another state referencing a 30 or 31-day continuation period. Wisconsin state statutes do not allow municipalities from regulating anything more than seven consecutive days. But you can regulate anywhere between one and But you can regulate anywhere between one and seven. In addition to that, statutes allow the municipality to limit total consecutive days they rent to no fewer than 180 days, or the minimum is 180 days, I should say. So as proposed in the ordinance, as we'll talk in a moment, the proposed ordinance does set that limitation to the state allowed minimum of 180 days. If the village desires, it could extend that beyond 100 days to 220, 360, whatever that number is, but it cannot be fewer than 180. In addition to that, the local municipality may require a local permit or license to be issued. And then finally, there are other regulations that municipality may attempt to provide. However, if they are inconsistent with Wisconsin state statute 661014, they would be found to be unlawful and they would not be able to be enacted. So a couple of other things that we'll mention here is that Wisconsin state statutes do not allow the village to limit the number of short-term rental licenses in a municipality. So I think there's some conversation that the board and committee have had about, well, one of the intent or intents of this change would be to reduce the number or mitigate the total number of short-term rental licenses operating in the village at any one time. There's comments about whether we have 60 or 70 licenses and whether or not that threshold is appropriate, given the number of dwelling units that are in the community. And if a municipality would say, well, we'll limit the number of licenses to 75. Wisconsin state statutes do not allow that. So we cannot allow or mitigate or limit the number of licenses that are issued. In addition to that, Wisconsin state statutes limit the location of short-term or the regulation of the, limit the ability of a municipality to regulate the location of short-term rental license holders by zoning district. So prior to Wisconsin Act 59 in 2017, municipalities had far overarching authorities to regulate short-term rental licensing based on the number of licenses they would like to issue and also based on the location of where those properties may exist. Had those provisions prevailed and were maintained in Wisconsin state statutes, there is a possibility that you may not be entertaining some of these limitations as it relates to the number of nights that are required as well as the number of consecutive days. Because then you could focus your attention into areas of the community that you think short-term rental licenses are appropriate. Okay, the proposed amendments, not sure if there's somebody on the computer, virtually if they're creating some static there. As part of the proposed amendments, so Chapter 6, Article 13, has a number of provisions. First and foremost, one of the provisions is to prohibit rentals for less than seven consecutive days. So right now, we do not have a limitation. What this will do is obviously create that six-night or seven consecutive day requirement, lengthening the stay of every rental under a licensed unit. It will limit the total days to rent to 180 consecutive days. Our current code requires an individual to rent it no more than 180 days over a licensing period. This proposed ordinance adds the word consecutive, meaning that on the first date of rental, that starts your rental clock, and now you have 180 days in which you can rent. Under the current provision, 180 days exist at any time throughout that licensing period. You just have to notify us when that first day is so that we know how many days you're renting over that licensing period. The proposed ordinance does continue to require a local permit for any short-term rentals who rent for more than 10 nights in a year. Wisconsin state statutes do limit municipalities for individuals that are looking to rent 10 or fewer nights. We cannot regulate those individuals. So I think at committee, there were some conversations from one of the residents who rent out their home that they use as their primary residence a couple of weekends a year, no more than a handful of nights, let's say five nights over the course of the year. They do not need to be licensed by the village, and they would now also not be affected by the proposed ordinance amendments as a result of that. In addition to that, the proposed amendment adds additional building regulations, particularly to ground fault circuit interrupters for wet areas of buildings, just to ensure that we meet building code compliance. And then in addition to that, just more of an administrative matter, it removes the license fees from municipal code and places those fees in the adopted village fee schedule. As you recall, we've been doing that periodically as we clean up ordinances so that we can monitor and manage our fee schedule in one single resolution versus going through several ordinance amendments. The other thing that I'll mention that was discussed at committee, so this item was brought forward to committee a few months ago with a proposed draft. The committee referred that draft back to staff with a few comments. From those comments, these provisions were added and are discussed here. The first thing I'll mention is that there was a question about why are we looking to do that? And from a staff perspective, we added the language to satisfy the interests of the committee to the purpose of the section of code, and that is to maintain and preserve the existing familial housing in our residential neighborhoods. In addition to that, we added some additional provisions to the component of the six consecutive night or seven consecutive day rental requirement. It should be noted that this is only applicable to single-family or one-person party or two-family homes. So apartment buildings, things of that nature, multifamily condominium developments, this provision of code does not apply to those types of developments. Again, primarily because we're looking to maintain those single-two-family familial developments or neighborhoods. Under the first paragraph, subparagraph A here, we talk about adding a duration of a grandfathering period. At the committee level, there were members of the public that expressed concerns about the pace or the timeline for this ordinance being adopted. The licensing period obviously begins July 1, ends June 30. We're here in May now debating an amendment to an ordinance that will affect the next licensing period. So there was a request by members of the public to delay the implementation of the six consecutive night or seven consecutive day requirement. And so Paragraph A in your proposed ordinance does just that. So any existing licensees of this current licensing period through June 30 of 2023 would be allowed to continue to operate for less than the six consecutive nights for a period of one licensing period. So on July 1 of 2024, under the proposed amendment, they would then need to comply with the six consecutive night requirement. Any new licensees, so if we have a new operator that's looking to come on board that hadn't previously been licensed in the 2022, 2023 licensing period, they would by default need to comply with the six consecutive night requirement immediately upon the licensing. Under Subparagraph B, the other provision that was discussed and was received by feedback from the community is that we do have situations where we have owner-occupied dwelling units that may rent out their residence for more than 10 consecutive, or more than 10 nights in a year, thus requiring the licensing. But by and large, for the majority of the year, they actually live, reside, and utilize that property as any other residential dwelling unit. And so Subparagraph B addresses that concern so that owner-occupied dwelling units that have been approved and licensed as an owner-occupied unit under that section would also be exempt from the six consecutive night requirement. So if I live in my home, I rent it out for more than 10 nights, so 11 or more nights, I have to be licensed, but because I live in that home and I reside in it, I would be exempt from that six consecutive night requirement. To kind of clarify what that means as far as owner-occupied, the proposed ordinance does add two definitions to the code, one related to owner-occupied status. So residential property that is occupied by an individual who has ownership interest in the property and uses the property as the individual's primary residence. Primary residence meaning a residential property where the property owner resides and maintains their full-time resident status, to which whenever absent from, that individual intends to return. Additional characteristics of a primary residence include, but are not limited to, where an individual receives their mail, claims residence for purposes of voter registration, tax returns, pays for their utilities, and lists their address on state-issued ID cards. An individual can have only one primary residence. So in order to qualify for that exemption to the six-night minimum, as part of the application process, that individual owner of that property would need to validate their owner-occupied status upon receiving the license. So they would show some type of proof, similarly to how you handle voter registration. The other thing that we're looking to do to help address some of the concerns about code compliance and things of that nature is establishing a reporting requirement for licensed short-term rentals. So in this particular paragraph, owners or property managers of short-term rentals shall keep and maintain a registration for all guests. That provision is in our code currently. However, from that registration, the owner or property manager shall submit a report to our Department of Community Development every 90 days or quarter, the number of guests, the date and time of the check-ins and check-outs for each rental period, and the report will be provided based on a form that's established by the department. Again, that's really just intended to make sure that the number of rental periods are being complied to, and it puts responsibility back on the operator to ensure that they are complying with the code. In the event that the operator fails to report or submit their quarterly report or their 90-day report, that gives us a clue then that we need to follow up from a code-compliance standpoint to ensure the report is being submitted and the provisions of code are being complied with. The other thing I'll mention is that a few of you have since come forward to me in the last, oh, let's say 12 to 24 hours about the NFL draft and essentially, how does this code, what effects will this code have for the upcoming draft in 2025? What I want to point out is that you can make your decisions based on the code today without the extraordinary circumstances that the draft creates as a result of some of the conditions that may come from that. So the village, the board can by resolution or ordinance adopt or temporarily suspend provisions of the code to accommodate special extraordinary, once-in-a-generational-type events like the NFL draft. So you can make your decisions tonight without having kind of the draft clouding your intent with what the code is providing, with the notion that if you wanted to address specifically that period of time that the draft will be coming to the community to accommodate guests and to supply appropriate accommodations, you can do that at that time. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Joel? Okay, hearing none. I do not sit on the Public Works Committee. I did chair that committee for about 14, 15 years, but I don't sit on that committee anymore, so I've not really commented on this issue, but I would like to make a few statements. We've heard from the short-term rental owners, we hear from every one of you, we get it. We've also heard from the community. And they stopped me in the grocery store, they stopped me at church, gas stations, and this is what they say to me. They've also invested. You have invested in our community, but they have also invested in our community. They've invested in their homes, our schools, their neighborhoods, and in their lives. And some of these people have lived there for 30 and 40 years, and they want to live in a neighborhood. I said to one gentleman, when you say that these aren't neighborhoods anymore, that is highly inflatable to some of the people that live in those neighborhoods because they still consider them their neighborhoods. So the residents expressed concerns about our great schools. Some of our neighborhoods have so many short-term rentals, there are no children in the neighborhoods anymore. If this continues, the impact is great. We had a more restrictive ordinance for short-term rentals before this legislation in 2017 was put in by the Joint Finance Committee in the back of the governor's budget. So we had areas where we could have short-term rentals. When this went through in 2017, it took away our ability to control the zoning in our community. And as I said to one gentleman, if you live in a neighborhood, this is like putting a three-story Holiday Inn Express right next to your house. And that's what the neighbors don't like. They, and like I said, they limited what we could do in 2019. I don't have the data from 2017, but in 2019, we had 27 short-term rentals. As of yesterday morning, and it may have grown, we have 70. And that number will grow. And it may be only 1% of our housing, but it is over 7% in the area that is directly south of Lambo Field. So that, as that grows, it will become bigger and bigger and bigger. Unfortunately, the state law does not leave us with a lot of options. We would love to put a compass around Lambo Field and say, this is the only place that you can do this? We can't. So your beef as far as a short-term rental is really with the state legislature, not us. DePere adopted this, there's many different communities that are adopting this. One of my friends went to California, they got a knock on the door the day of the wedding that they had to leave because they were not allowed to be in a short-term rental. So this is happening all over. So we're elected to make these decisions and are tasked with weighing our options for the advancement and betterment of our community. So that being said, I will ask any of the board members if they want to make any statements, but this is only for board discussion.
I'll make a statement. I am on the Public Works Committee, and we have been struggling with this for months. It's not fair to say it's all been decided and we're just rubber-stamping tonight because there are people still spending a lot of time going back and forth on many of the little pieces and parts of the proposed amendment. A lot, a lot of the people who have come to the Public Works meetings are opposed to it. And so you're saying, everybody who's coming, we've heard them object to it. But what you're not seeing is the emails and the phone calls and the personal contacts that we're all getting from residents of Ashwabanon saying, you know, there's a bachelorette party and they have, you know, noisy music going on until all hours, and people parking in front of my mailbox, and parking in front of my driveway, and, you know, explicit balloons that my young children are picking up out of the grass going, mommy, what's this? You know, and people using their bushes as restrooms, people using their children's swing sets inappropriately. It's happening. So you don't have all the information just from who showed up at those meetings, but we do. We've been working hard to gather information from both sides of the issue. Actually, it came up from neighbors complaining. We didn't create the impetus for doing this. I mean, it was raised by a resident. Like Mary said, the plan in 2017 was to have a stadium district, have an area where these small businesses could operate as short-term rentals, but the legislature in Act 59 put the kibosh on it. So you can't limit the number of short-term rentals by saying, we're only going to have this many per population, and you can't limit it by geographical area. So we appreciate that people are suggesting that, they suggest it every time we meet, but we can't do that. We did consider it, but we can't do it. To me, it's not persuasive to have somebody say the number of short-term rentals compared to the total to the total population is 1%," because the area that's suffering is that area around Lambeau Field. And like Mary just said, when you do the correct proportion, the concentration of short-term rentals in that area is way higher than 1%. I think you said it was 7% or whatever. What's that? Oh, floor's closed, sorry.
Floor's closed.
I am not in favor of treating the existing short-term rentals differently than new short-term rentals, just because I feel like it will be an enforcement nightmare. Whoever the enforcement officers are, are going to be charged with, "Oh, wait, you know, flipping through this, this one can do that, that one can't." You're going to have homes right across the street from each other or right next to each other, and one can do this, but one can't. I mean, I think whatever we do in order to avoid those kind of conflicts, it almost feels like discrimination to me against the new businesses that might be formed. I would not be in favor of treating the existing businesses differently. And I'm not sure, I can't remember which person was speaking, who said the 180-day limit is a problem, but you understand that the way the ordinance is right now, it's 180 days. What we're proposing to amend is to have it 180 consecutive days. Is that right?
That's huge.
I agree. So, I mean, I would not be opposed to keeping it the way it is at 180 days, that you can spread out over the whole 360, but it was my understanding that the group seems to think that that's a new requirement and that that's an existing requirement, isn't it?
Yeah, and I'll just clarify. So, the maximum amount of rental days in a given calendar year or licensing period is unchanged. So, 180 days, 180 days. Where there's probably challenges for the operators is that they lose flexibility by adding the consecutive day period. Now, from the start of their first rental, they have 180 days, the clock starts running immediately from that point. They would literally have to rent their unit for every day for that 180-day period to achieve the same amount of rental dates that they could on 180 days over a full 12-month period, if that makes sense. So, you lose a lot of flexibility, and it forces you to rent that unit for that full 180 consecutive day period versus 180 days over the course of an entire calendar year.
Well, I would not be opposed to keeping that the same, the way it is now. Keep it 180 days, they can spread it out over the 365, because I think with the six-day, the six-day requirement really is helping us get control over these places with licensing, because it's going to require people to get a license. I mean, that's another problem I have with comparing the number of short-term rentals to the total population, is there's a big percentage of short-term rentals right now that are not licensed. So, you're not seeing that in the numbers you're looking at that are available. But with this requirement, people will have to get licensed, because if you rent it even twice, you're over the 10-day limit and you need a license. And that gives us a way to have control over these properties and make sure that everybody's being good neighbors. And for the people who've already been on operation and are having no problem, it's not going to be hard for you to comply, because you're already a good neighbor. But, so I would consider eliminating the consecutive word from the amendment to give these businesses the chance to spread their 180 days out over the 365. And I'm not opposed to the idea of a committee looking at it with Representative Stefan and a Realtor and whatever, whatever, but we can even do that after whatever we're going to do is enacted, because you can always, I mean, even, no matter what we do tonight, you can still meet and discuss it and see if there are other options out there, because what's happening, what's frustrating to me is that many, many people have contacted me in all different forms to say, "Well, there's got to be a solution." Well, I would love to hear your ideas about what is the solution. We have done a considerable amount of work trying to figure it out, and it's such a unique situation that there's no resource you can go to and say, "Oh, yeah, Kansas City, this is how you do it right here." Because there's no big sports venue like Lambeau in a residential area anywhere else in the world that we've discovered, so.
Right. And the biggest thing for us is that the state legislature tied our hands. So, that's the biggest thing. So, anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I got a couple. You couldn't have probably said it any better, Kelly, than where we're going with this. Any of you people sit up on this chair here and listen to the phone calls we get from people that are against having these homes, and there's a couple in the crowd here that I see, but they will not come to these meetings and speak like all you people here that own one, because they're still your neighbor, one way or another. So, they're open to us, but they won't come to these meetings. We've learned that a long time ago. Another thing that I'm finding out, the homes for sale that I have seen recently in the market here, when you get a two-bedroom home, one bath, on an average-size lot listed in excess of $500,000, you're not looking for a first-time homebuyer there. You know, that's what's happening. Our homes values, the people that are trying to sell them are getting them so high, looking for people that want to have that home for either an event home or a home for themselves to come here, which we've got some of them. They just live there for the opportunity of coming to the events that they have. So, I don't have a problem in going with the 300, or the long-term rather than the 180. Also, Joel, clarify one thing for us, that we are in a one-year trial period because of some of these homes already have rented them out beyond the July expiration date when they come into their new year.
That is correct.
Go on.
Yeah, so essentially, there's that exemption provision for one year. So, for those active licensees between July 1, 2022, June 30 of 2023, so this current licensing period we're in.
Correct.
If you have an existing license and you apply to renew your license for the next licensing period, you would be able to be exempt from that six-night or seven-consecutive-day requirement for one year. Until July 1 of 2024, you would need to then comply with that six-consecutive-night or seven-consecutive-day requirement. The purpose of that was, we heard from members of the public, short-term rental operators, saying that they are currently renting or taking bookings for their units already for the next licensing period, and that would hopefully satisfy that dilemma that they may have in taking rentals that were maybe three or four days in length.
So, that gives these people a chance to figure out where they're going to go with the new rules for the upcoming year, let's call it. We, as a board, have the same thing here. When that year is up, we could be doing something different too, to please some people. And what, we're going to learn something out of this too. You're going to have to come to us and say, "Hey, this ain't working," or "That ain't working," which we're going to have to look at again. So, don't think you're the only one that's being penalized on this, because we're going to be looking at it too. So, those are the comments I've got on it, right at the moment, anyway.
On that point, as far as the, I'll call it grandfathering in for the next year, that still gives us, though, the ability as a board, a year from now, to say we're happy with the way things are going, to be able to make that decision, maybe, "Hey, let's extend this to these people that are already property owners." We've got that ability to make that decision down the road.
Yeah, I believe the current draft ordinance was written in a way where you could adjust that termination period within that sub-paragraph. So, instead of just saying one year or until July 1 of 2024, you could strike a provision within that paragraph that would allow you to extend it, but that would require, obviously, a formal ordinance amendment again in the future. But yeah, you would be able to do that.
A couple points I just want to make, just listening to everybody, not just here, but at the other meetings too. To me, the issue that keeps coming to the forefront, one of them is problem houses. And a great majority of what you guys have, you guys run great businesses, and I'm sure the neighbors appreciate that. Every neighborhood has problem houses that are permanent residents, and I'd certainly sometimes rather have a short-term rental next to me than, or across from me than some of the stuffs I've seen over the years. That's not an issue for me. That's not why I'm up here debating this issue. We can solve any of those problems. That's easy to do. That's easy enough to do. It's just the sudden surge in losing our homes to the short-term rentals. Mary brought up a good number before, where we were, I can't remember a short time ago, till now, it's grown dramatically. And to me, that's what we want to try, or in my mind, we want to try to slow down. This is just, this is, we can't, before it gets out of hand, we've got to look at this. We've got to look at the future of our neighborhoods. Comments are always made about the Packers buying up all those properties. There's not much we can do. I mean, if somebody wants to sell their property, they're going to sell their property. We got no control over that. Personally, the way I feel about it, to make it, I don't want, I hate to use "fair" as a word, maybe to keep everybody satisfied, as long as we've got the ability as a board a year from now to take a look at the way things are going, I would be satisfied with grandfathering everybody in for the year at the three-day. And consecutive 180s, 180, 180, not limited to 180 days. And that we take a look at it another year. I think these people have invested a lot of, obviously, money and time and energy and to build some nice properties. And to me, anyway, that's my own feeling, is, do we owe them anything? Maybe not, but is it the right thing to do? I think yes.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah. The problem's been stated over and over again, and I don't think there's anybody in this board that doesn't understand your position as an investor. Totally get it, but we also need to be looking at, what's the future of Ashwabanon and where does it go to? And we aren't sure that this is going to stop somebody else from buying a house and turning into a short-term rental, but we're trying to do something here to maybe make it less attractive, so that there aren't more short-term rentals, so that the neighborhoods don't turn into house after house after house after house of just short-term rental. That's really what we're trying to accomplish by this. Is it going to do it? We don't know that, but that was part of the reason at the subcommittee level I put in, I requested for the extension out to July of 2024, because that gives all of you a chance to evaluate. It also gives us a chance to evaluate, and I think it would be great for a number of you and us to be getting together and to be discussing that as we're going through this year and saying, "Okay, how can we make this work?" Because truly understand that you guys have invested money, and you're trying to protect your investment. I would too. I get it. But I would love to work with a group of you and that to talk about, Kelly had talked about it, to try to, is there some other way? We seem to have these state restrictions and that, but maybe if we talk about it and sit down, maybe we can come up with something that is going to work for you guys, but yet, maybe it will make it less attractive for somebody in Seattle, Washington, to buy a house here. Obviously, they aren't here. You guys are in the area. I get it. Yeah, maybe you don't all live in Ashwabanon, but at least you're in the area. So, I think at this point, with that year, I think we can have those meetings and try to work on those solutions and try to come up with that. But that ultimate goal is to try to keep Ashwabanon, as much as it's so landlocked, we have to try to get more families and younger people in here. And all of you know what the cost of housing and that is right now, and it isn't just Ashwabanon, I get it. But how do we somehow make that work so that our school district doesn't start to deteriorate? Because there are just loads and loads of studies that, once your school district starts to kind of fall apart, crime starts to come into the community. There's all kinds of things, bad things, that start happening in the community. That's what we are trying to, we're wrestling with, how do we keep our neighborhoods vibrant, keep them growing? You know, and again, we're landlocked, so we're really stuck. So, this is an attempt, and I would love to get together with a group of you and discuss, how are you working with your short-term rentals? What do you see as might be other solutions? And to work through that going forward in this next year. And I would ask staff to kind of try to organize those, and I would like them to be smaller group meetings. You know, I think we'd get more done if we have, you know, a group of you, and then a group of you come in, and then a group of you come in, and try to work together and keep massaging and see if we can't come up with a better solution. It doesn't appear to be apparent to us right now, but we, you know, we've got this year, let's take advantage of it and see what we can do with it. And I would also concur that I would go, "Yeah, let's drop the consecutive days. Let's just make it 180." That would be my thought.
Thank you, Jay. Chris?
I moved to Ashwabanon in 2006, 2007, met a lot of people, great friends. Over the past five years, I watched five of my good, close friends and families move out of our district, because they couldn't find houses, two of which houses exist that they would have stayed for, that are short-term rental. It's unfortunate, there's not a lot of options for them in Ashwabanon. That's part of the reason I actually wanted to be on the village board, was to help preserve our residential side. I do think that the short-term rental is a very small piece that needs an adjustment to help promote residential growth in Ashwabanon. I also am a real estate investor, so I feel for every single one of you guys for what you're facing and what potentially could happen. Nobody wants anybody to lose any money. It's just, it's a very difficult situation. As everybody else had said, we are stopped by lots of people to discuss this. Questions are brought up, what happens when you take a block by the stadium and people start buying it for short-term rentals and they start turning over? You're selling them for $900,000, $1 million, 1.1. Four years down the road, that whole area minus three people are all short-term rental. Your taxes could potentially be driven astronomical to force those three people out of their house, because they will not be able to afford it. They could be retired, they could be mom and pop, it could be me. I don't want that for our community. We have to have some form of control. For myself, I could get behind removing the 180 consecutive days, but I would not want to drop off of the six days. I would prefer to stay with the 180 consecutive days, but we need to come up with an agreement between all of us that we all can live with. If we can revisit this in a year, those are discussions that we'll have to have.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any other discussions by the board?
I have a question for Joel. If...
If, if they, if the short-term rental property rents the property, let's say from Wednesday to Wednesday, and the people really only want to stay for the weekend. I mean, I think with creative pricing, they could probably manage that, just say the weekend nights are 250 and the other nights are $10 or whatever you want to do. But do the actual nights that the place is occupied count as the actual nights? Or like, could they, in their reporting, say that was only really two nights? I mean, we rented it for six nights, but the people only occupied it for two, so you still have four nights available to use later in the 180 days. You know what I mean?
No, the, the six nights would need to be a component of that 180-day requirement. So, and that, that's, it's critical for the reporting mechanism as well to show that, you know, if they only occupy the unit for the four nights, but they rented it for the six, that doesn't gain the operator, the licensee, and other two nights to rent. So that's six, so they still would be somewhat limited to, what, I think 30 individual rentals over the period of licensing year.
Okay.
So Joel, if you're renting for, let's say the pit party wants it for three months, X three months, three days, they're, they're still held in for the seven days?
Correct. So they may only, again, may only occupy the, yep, they may only occupy the building for the three days, but that rental would account for six nights, seven consecutive days over that 180-day rental period of, of time.
Okay. The comment was brought up, and Jay, I think you hit it about having some of our upper people in government joining in on us. I just happened to be with some realty people recently. I think this whole rental deal probably stemmed from the realty industry, meaning the League of Realtors. They were for this. I was with some realtors recently. Now they got a problem because they don't have an inventory anymore. There is no homes to, on the market to sell because of the short-term rental situation. So there, you can laugh all you want, people, but I got it from a person that was really in charge of it. So the inventory is not there anymore because of that.
Okay, so, board, any other comments or discussions by anybody or does somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion. I will make a motion regarding ordinance number 05-1-23, repealing and recreating Article 13, licensing of short-term rentals in Chapter 6 businesses, with the exception that I would remove the consecutive days, still leave in the 180 days, but remove the consecutive days. And I would also direct staff to set up individual meetings to reach out and contact you along with other, other people within neighborhoods, that we would do individual group meetings over the next nine months so that we can get ourselves prepared when we're coming up to that year date back in July 2024 to be able to revisit this.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I, I just want to be clear on this now. If this goes through, my understanding that the folks out here that have, currently have a license still for the next year, they can go with the three, the shorter than?
No.
Say, no.
No. They can do 180 days throughout the year, does not have to be consecutive, but Jay left in the six night.
So, yeah, and the, the current proposed ordinance does in fact provide that one year. So through July, up to July 1, 2024, existing licensees, the draft that you have present on your, in your packet, has that provision for one year to July 1, 2024, the ability to rent for fewer than six consecutive nights, but for that one year. Jay's amendment to the proposed ordinance tonight on the floor essentially removes the word consecutive. It would be under paragraph, so if you're looking on your board packet, page 184, it would be section 66-13-22, sub-paragraph C, sub-1. I will see if I can show my screen here quick. Bear with me. That is not what I wanted. So it would be this word right here, consecutive, based on Jay's motion, would be stricken from the proposed ordinance.
But that would, we would still require that CGI that's still in there, correct? That electrical?
GF CI.
GF CI.
Yeah, everything else stays the same. Jay's, Jay's motion essentially only eliminates the word consecutive under the paragraph that's highlighted on the screen.
For me, because of the grace period, I feel like you can leave the 180 consecutive days in it and we can hopefully, as a group, come up with a better solution, target this better, maybe on a state level, so we can actually control where these are allowed. Geographically, I could tell you, my parents lived on O'Nite Street for years and I would have never raised my family in that house for how busy it was. It's a perfect short-term rental house. Unfortunately, they were not allowed in that area when it came up for sale. So I'm with everybody. There, there's perfect spots for them. If we could draw a line, that'd be great. That's going to have to be addressed on a state level. So for me, I would want to see the consecutive, 180 consecutive days left in because you do have the one-year grace period, so nothing's going to change for you guys for this first year. And hopefully, we can come up with a better solution before that would be enacted next year.
But if this goes through, it does change for them.
Yeah, it does change the consecutive.
Right. Right, it's, yeah. The problem I have with this is if, if, if the objective here is to look at the future of our neighborhoods and, and, and slow down the, the purchases of these, these houses just for short-term rentals, changing what's going on right now or letting these people do what they're doing now and moving forward to the 180 and six days, changing what they're doing now does not meet that objective.
Right.
To me. So why are we doing that to them? You know, if our, if our objective is, is to, to watch out for our neighborhoods in the coming years and slow this process down, leave these guys be right now because changing it for them is not going to affect one way or another, in my mind, unless I'm thinking a different type of way. In my mind, it's, it's not going to change.
Yeah, I, I guess I, Joel, are we going to leave them currently set the way they were for any existing bookings they have? Because if they have something already on the books, which is very possible for two nights, we're still going to allow them to rent it just for two nights.
The current licensees need to apply with the rest of the ordinance as presented, if it's adopted. The only thing that's amended from this and is removed is the 180 consecutive days. Everyone here will be grandfathered, okay, for the six nights only.
For one year.
Yes, for one year.
For one.
As, as the motion is right now. However, the rest of the ordinance is still applied to everyone across the board.
Okay.
Makes sense? Except the consecutive days.
No.
They still. So, and just, and to be clear and transparent, so Patrick is exactly right. So as the ordinance stands, the, the grandfathering, if you will, is for a one-year period of existing licensees. The grandfathering applies strictly to the six-night, seven consecutive day requirement.
Got it.
The 180 consecutive days is applicable day one, July 1, 2023, for that next licensing period. That was not a component or a discussion point at committee. So if you would wish to grandfather that provision in, we would just need to, to add some additional language to show that, that those existing licensees are also grandfathered for, let's say, one year for the 180 consecutive day requirement.
Right. And, and that gives us the ability as a board to look at it in one year or less than one year and go, this isn't working, or this is working, or in the meantime, you don't have these meetings.
Right. And, and that's why.
Without, without affecting these guys.
Yeah, we're saying new, new ones are going to have to do six days, but we've got one year before the six days apply to, would apply to these folks, and that gives us that time to figure that out.
But July 1, the new people that apply for a license will have to.
Will get six days.
Six days. The people who are currently short-term rental will be grandfathered in.
Will be grandfathered in, and they can do two days, just like they were operating today until July 1 of 2024.
I, I agree that.
And then that gives us a year to get together and try to figure out, is there?
I agree that, no matter what.
That is, that is the way it's written.
These people should be grandfathered beyond 180 days because if they do have somebody that has a wedding planned at the end of this year and something at the beginning of the year, they're going to have to cancel that. That's going to be terrible for a business and it's going to be extremely bad for the person that's in a wedding party or whatever else.
Well, that's the reason for going for the one year to let them do that, because they're already booking. We know that.
Right.
So the motion does remove the consecutive language.
Yeah.
So it does, it applies for everybody across the board, including the current licensees, correct?
Right.
Okay.
You look confused, Chris.
I just want to make sure.
I'm slightly confused myself.
So I, I'll walk, I'll walk through it again. So I think the, the debate is twofold. One, the board desires to ensure that existing licensees are afforded at least one year to continue to operate under the same rules that are today, meaning they can rent it for fewer than six consecutive nights. The proposed ordinance that's in your packet does allow for that for one year. Jay's proposed change to the ordinance that is presented to you tonight is to eliminate or strike the word consecutive under that paragraph, which would also eliminate the issue or concern that board may have about existing licensees renting over the course of that full 12-month period, but outside of 180 consecutive days. If the board desires to add consecutive days back into it after one year, that is not a part of the proposed, a, a, a part of the motion at this time. So you have a couple of different options. You could withdraw your motion, add a new motion, vote on the existing motion as it stands, or certainly amend the motion to simply add language to the ordinance that would add the word consecutive days after July 1, you know, effective July 1, 2024.
I think because of the, the nature of, of Green Bay and Lambeau Field and events and that, that's why I think we should just remove the consecutive days at this point. And let's go for a year and then let's see.
So Jay, the year is for the 365 days a year then?
Correct.
We're eliminating the 180 days for the existing.
It's, it's 180 days, but we're not saying consecutive, so it has to be within.
Oh, so they can only rent for 180 days yet?
Right.
Correct.
But it doesn't have to be consecutive.
Correct. Because the way that it's written with consecutive, if they take, if they take their first rental today, they, they only got 180 days to do all their renting. And once the 180 days are up, they got to be done. And I'm saying, let's just pull that one out for now. We've got the year. Everybody operates the way they is right now and then come next July and obviously prior to that, and we have meetings with a number of you in order to figure out, is there a better solution out there?
Okay, now I'm going to try to clear up this mud a little bit. So do we need a separate, an added language to the ordinance if we want new short-term rental people come July 1, 2023 to have to do the 180 consecutive days?
If the board desires that new, basically, essentially what you're doing is grandfathering in existing licensees.
Correct.
If the board desires to place that requirement on new licensees, then yes, you would need to amend the motion to incorporate that language into the ordinance.
Which I thought, I thought that the, the purpose of this was to grandfather the people who have existing short-term rentals.
Correct.
That the new people that come July 1, 2023 would have to follow the 180 consecutive days, which is the stricter ordinance that the state allows.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to amend your motion, Jay, to do that?
I will, I will make that amendment that any new licensee as of July 1, 2023 would have the 180-day consecutive.
Consecutive, okay, okay.
But all of the existing short-term rentals will maintain what they've got.
Okay, I understand it. Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
And Kelly, were you the second?
I was. I'll, I'll second the friendly amendment there.
Okay. Okay, now, this is clear as mud. So does everybody understand that we are taking the consecutive out of the, the existing licensees for the next rental period, but the new licensees come July 1, 2023 will have to follow the 180 consecutive days?
And 2024, everybody will?
Well, we don't know that.
We don't know that.
We don't know that yet. Okay.
Understand.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Does the board have any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, items for the next agenda. If anybody has anything, give staff a call, we'll get it on the agenda. Closed session items, during the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabanon may convene into closed session pursuant to ABC in the packet. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.85 parent 2 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to enter closed session, second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please. President Kardowski?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
And Trustee Flukier excused. Thank you, everybody.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
We got through it all right. What do you, what do you think there? What do you think?